All right, time is now 7:00 PM. I'll go ahead and call to order the Amherst County Board of Supervisors meeting today. It is July 16th, 2024. First item we have is the approval of the agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda and move item number 11, departmental reports, ahead of the public hearing section. Any discussion there, Board?
I'm okay with that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, would anybody like to? Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion then. I'll make the motion with the amended agenda as mentioned. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Next item we have is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Before we get to that, though, I want to say a few words to everyone here, everyone listening at home. Before we pray, I want to take a brief minute to discuss the attack we as a nation witnessed this past Saturday. This was a heinous act committed by an individual of which we should all be in alignment to condemn. However, this has not been the case. For those out there, and I've already heard a few, not here in the crowd, of course, saying that the shooter was stupid or failed for missing, shame on you. Regardless of political affiliation, ideology, or whatever creed you live by, there's no place for violence towards any political candidate or elected leader, whether that be President Trump, President Biden, or Mr. Kennedy. Over the next few days, weeks, and months gearing up towards the election for the presidency, we need to keep in mind that at the end of the day, everyone wants and should be able to go home to their family. The best way for this to happen is to show respect for others, even if our views aren't in alignment. For those impacted by Saturday's events, and this includes President Trump himself, I ask that you act with mercy and compassion rather than with anger or malice. Show that we as a society can be better. Show that we as the United States are better than the divisions that some have tried to separate us into. After all, Saturday proved that regardless of our differences, we all believe the same. For those that lost a family member or friend, and this applies to both the shooter and Mr. Compratore, I pray that you find comfort and peace amidst the storm you're facing now. Despite our disagreements, let's not lose sight of the fact that we're Americans. I ask that you pray continuously for our nation, pray for our leaders, whether you like them or not, and pray God's blessings on our country. With that, I'll pass it over Mr. Martin to pray.
Please rise, bow your heads. Our Father and our God, Lord, we come before you as your humble servants. Lord, thank you for the, just the wise words of our board chairman, Mr. Wade, Father. They just hold so much truth. Father, we just pray for our great country. Lord, we just pray for unity. Lord, we're never going to always agree with each other, Lord, but just let us be civil towards one another and ultimately show Christ's love for each other. Father, we just pray your wisdom on this board tonight as we take up the county's business. Father, help us to make wise decisions. Father, we thank you for the citizens that have come out tonight. Lord, we see a bunch of young people in the audience, Father, and we know those and others are going out to represent this great county in a sporting event, Lord, for the World Series, and we just pray your special blessing on them and their families. We know they've worked hard to get where they are, and just pray that you will continue to lead and guide them and bless them and keep them healthy, Lord. Father, we just thank you for your Son, Jesus, and it's in his name we ask it and pray. Amen.
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 Please direct your attention to the flag, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next item we have is citizen comment. So I do have somebody signed up tonight, so I'll invite you first, and then we'll open it up to everybody else. Just keep in mind, we provide three minutes, and make sure you just note what district you're from and your name. First we have is Mary Catherine Allen. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening.
Little gray button.
Ah, there we go. Mary Catherine Allen, address 7763 Richmond Highway, Gladstone. I am not an Amherst County resident. I live in Nelson County. However, I am speaking on behalf of the Amherst County citizens with the Amherst Youth Baseball Team. First, thank you all for your time and dedication that you all give to the citizens of Amherst County. It is a lot of sacrifices and a lot of work, and I think a lot of times it goes unnoticed, so it's much appreciated. Again, I am a Nelson County resident, speaking on behalf of our team here, the Amherst Ozone team. They are made up of 11, 11- and 12-year-old student athletes. Eleven of them are, seven of them are Amherst County athletes, and four of them are Nelson County athletes. Nelson County ceased having operations for youth baseball about three years ago, and so many of our athletes have been coming for the last four years here to your county to play baseball. On Monday, July 8th, last week, this team won the ozone Division II State Championship in Appomattox. This means that they are now headed to the Dixie Youth, referred to as Diamond Youth now, World Series in Bozer City, Louisiana. This is what every little boy has dreamed of, and it's playing in a World Series. These young men have worked very hard this spring season, and we want to get them to the World Series, and it's a unique opportunity for these 11 student athletes. Our first game will be scheduled on Thursday, July 25th, against Texas. This team, and I'm going to call their names out, Stephen Allen, Riker Dawson, Brady Deacon, Colton Gibson, Xander Mayo, Brody Mays, Kendall Napier, Hayden Simpson, Henry Wright, Olin Wright, Devin Vire, manager Bill Dawson, and coaches Jeff Mayo and Jim Allen. During, to give you just a little bit of information, during the district and state tournament, they were undefeated during both tournaments, beating out their opponents 78 to 9, means they scored 78 runs and allowed nine only. They have put in the work through the heat and injuries to get to this point. We're asking for the Board of Supervisors to help these young men with a financial donation. We have reached out to many local businesses. We're organizing a fundraiser, which is happening this Friday, but we are estimating this trip to cost approximately $3,000 per player, and that's a minimum. That's not extras. That's going to include hotel costs, gas, and food, and most of it is for vehicles. A lot of our families will have to rent, just we don't have the dependable vehicles to all get us there, and we want to make sure that we don't have any breakdowns because we have to have 11 to play when we get there. Most of us are leaving on Monday, July 22nd, or Tuesday, July 23rd, to make sure that we get there in time and that the kids are rested and ready to play. These young men have worked so hard, and your financial support will provide an opportunity for them to see great competition and be successful outside of our county and our state borders. They are our Team Virginia. Please help us to get them there so they can show us their very best. If you choose to make the donation of support, the check can be written to Amherst Dixie Youth Baseball. We would like to say we did speak to the Board of Supervisors in Nelson last week, and they did donate $5,000 to our team. During this time of financial hardships, anything that y'all can give is greatly appreciated. They've been out there working, not only practicing and getting ready, but out there knocking on doors and asking, so anything you can give is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. First off, boys, congratulations on making it this far, so good luck to you. I've had an opportunity to speak to the other board members before y'all arrived, so we all concluded we do want to make a donation to your team and all the other Amherst County teams that are going to be going to the World Series. So with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion now that we make a donation of $2,000 to each team from Amherst County going to the World Series for both baseball and softball. Any discussion, Board?
And how many teams are there?
So there's five, potentially six, so.
So that'll be at least a $10,000, probably a $12,000 donation.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote aye as well, so congratulations, thank you. Kendall, I expect two home runs, just letting you know that.
So do we. Thank you so much. We're going to give a.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next item. Well, first off, we're still in citizen comment. Anybody else wishing to come and speak at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to departmental reports. Planning Commission Annual Report, Mr. Fore.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for the agenda adjustment. I really appreciate that. I'm here tonight to present to you the 2023 Annual Report from the Planning Commission. I think you have it included in your packet. We're growing, and I think it's exciting for the county, and I think that we're moving the county in a positive direction. I'm blessed to work with some fantastic members on the Planning Commission. What we've done in the past year and will continue to do is it's good for business, it's good for the tax base, all the while protecting the natural beauty of this county. Just a couple of the highlights, the Route 29 Beautification Committee, I know you're all familiar with that, and the hard work that they've done. I think they're led by Bev Jones primarily. I know Jeremy's very involved with that, but they're doing great things. The continued branding specifically, like the water tower and the things you see as you go through Madison Heights. Of course, the Madison Heights Conceptual Master Plan, that's a big one that you all adopted in 2023. The Planning Commission has put an incredible amount of time on the utility scale solar ordinance. I think we've come up with a very good one, and I think it's going to be very beneficial to the county moving forward. And it also includes a revenue share program, which I think is super important when it comes to having big business like that a part of our county. Obviously, several large subdivisions were approved last year, and a bunch of rezonings to allow for more housing in the county, which seems to be greatly needed. We reviewed 17 special exceptions to help promote business in the county, and I think I can speak for the Planning Commission in thanking you for your dedication and support, making these and so many of the other projects happen in the county as we move towards the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item we have is the Treasures Quarterly Report. That is in there for information only, if you have any questions. All right, moving back to the public hearing, the first item we have is rezoning 2024-287, Silas E. McDaniel. Mr. Creasy.
Chairman, Board, good to see you all. As you mentioned, this is a request by Silas McDaniel for his rezoning of approximately 2.468 acres from the R2 General Residential District to the B2 General Commercial District. The purpose of this rezoning is to allow for a towing business and storage lot, which is a special exception in the B2 District and is the case right after this one. The existing land use is mostly a fill pit area with private water and sewer, and is not in the designated growth boundary for either. I'm going to show you real quick. The zoning for this area is a hodgepodge of mixed zoning areas. So as you can see, that's shown on page three of the staff report and before you. Properties to the north and south adjoining are zoned R2, with single-family dwellings. Across the street, or Toy Town Road, is A1 zoning, and then on the other side of South Amherst Highway, and then roughly 600 feet north of the reference lot, are three other lots zoned B2. So that's the hodgepodge that I was sort of getting at with that. There is a conceptual site plan found within the staff report, which we'll go over in the special exception, and other than that, there's a timeline for approval. The board has 12 months, and Planning Commission's recommendation was to send this before you all for approval with a 5-0 vote. There is a recommended motion found within your item summary, and at this time, are there any questions for staff?
Board, any questions?
Have a few. So first, I don't see it as being a hodgepodge of zoning. I think that the R2 zoning is fairly consistent as it starts at Toy Town and 29 and wraps in behind. But my primary question is, it looks like on, at least for the county's GIS map, that that property line into Toy Town comes back at a very sharp angle and point, and then if you look at their conceptual plan, it looks somewhat different. If you look at their photography, it looks like the entrance to that lot is coming across somebody else's property. So they're not rezoning that, so how could they have commercial access across a piece of property that they don't own or wouldn't be rezoned?
Right, that's a great question.
And if I can pull it up in this board packet. Oh, I just signed you up. The GIS is always not drawn correctly, and this has been sent off to VDOT as well. They've indicated that there will be no issue putting in a low-volume commercial entrance. It's just the GIS has not showed that he has actual frontage along Toy Town Road.
So the survey is correct, the GIS map is incorrect.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adams, any question?
Not at this moment.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come up and address the board at this time. All right, seeing none, anyone wishing to oppose? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Board, what's your pleasure?
Did the petitioner not want to speak? I guess, okay. So I think going from the R2 to the commercial zoning and then straight to a conditional use permit for a towing yard is probably too far at this time. I just can't support it. You're going to have residences on both sides of it, so I just think that it's too much at this time, too far to go, so that's my thought on it, and I will make a motion to deny the rezoning.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
What would you be happy with? Is there some way we can compromise here? I would hate to see this gentleman who's put money into this idea have to walk out of here with nothing, and I like to be business friendly.
Well, I do too, but I don't think this is the right spot for that type of business. We have thousands of vehicle going up 29, and this is a primary gateway into and out of our county, and this is going to be basically wrecked cars sitting on the side of 29, and that's not the image I want to present for people coming and leaving the county.
But we'd be able to see.
I think we made a, we're going to talk about in matters from the board, the one across the road, because I think that's one that we approved, and they haven't met their end of the bargain, all right? So I just don't see, to me, it's too intensive a use. That's my opinion. You know, I've put the motion on, obviously you can speak to the motion, but that's where I'm at.
The motion is on the floor, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Motion is on the floor, and it was, it came to us from the Planning Commission 5-0, and I try to support our planning commission whenever I can, so I would be okay with this. It's in your district, but the motion is on the floor.
I mean, you speak to the motion either way.
I can't support your motion, Mr. Martin. I think that, as I read this, and Mr. Creasy, correct me if I'm wrong, there'll be a fence around this, correct, right?
That's correct, and I apologize. I should have went further into that. The, all of the towed vehicles, per the conditions of the special exception, Mr. McDaniel's indicated he plans to build an opaque fence around the area where he would like to store vehicles. No vehicles will be left outside of that opaque fence. And then, in addition, there are photographs that staff took from the existing lot looking down on South Amherst and across Toy Town, and just due to the elevation change and with that opaque fence, staff is under the belief that you would not see vehicles from South Amherst Highway or from Toy Town Road, just due to that condition. And unlike a lot of these other uses, this applicant has indicated he's willing to put up that opaque fence and maintain it in its perpetuity.
I've got a question there. I didn't, there's some vegetation on the highway side there, but there's no trees in that region, and I didn't see a proffer to add any type of tree line to kind of even mask it further. Would the applicant consider that?
He might. Now, I do know he will have to go through the minor site plan requirements, so he will have to meet our landscaping requirements along South Amherst Highway, which we talked about, and along Toy Town, so one tree, and he's also doing the fence to meet our screening requirements, and he'll plant, he's indicated he'll be planting shrubs along that fence as well. But in regards to a proffer for that, that was not mentioned. It would be through the conditions of the minor site plan and special exception requirements.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
I think, I'm struggling with this one. Obviously, I respect it, being in Mr. Martin's district, and as Ms. Tucker stated earlier, I definitely want to make sure that we support small businesses in Amherst County, and we have that business-friendly stigmatism, right? However, this is where I'm struggling. I agree with Mr. Martin's comments. The 29 corridor, I'm not, it doesn't matter to me whether we're talking about the south end or the north end, right? As Mr. Fore just left, and the Planning Commission has spent a significant amount of time with the Route 29 Beautification Committee, right, and have done great things on the south end. I don't think we need to disregard the fact of the north end as well, because it's still a gateway into our county. An opaque fence could be of any material, correct?
Yes, I believe he's indicated it'll be wood, but you could potentially put up a mesh along a chain link fence as well for it to be considered opaque. You just would not be able to see through it.
It's, this last thing I want to say on it, because the motion's on the floor, is it's going from a residential district to a very intense commercial use. You're going to be moving vehicles in and out at all times of day and night between two residences, okay? You know, I know the proffer said there'll be no more than 20 vehicles a day. Who's going to enforce that? I don't think we have the staff for that. Who's going to enforce it when the fence is not maintained? No one, okay? So it's too intensive a use, too visually obstructive for that part of 29. It's between two residential homes, and I know no one came out to speak, but it's two different property owners, it's not owned by the same people, so I see it as my duty to protect people in my district. So that's why I made the motion, and you guys can, obviously, I respect the opinion of the board, but it's my district, and that's the way I view it.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin to deny the rezoning request. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote aye as well. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, three to one. The rezoning is denied. Next item we have is, well, moving on to conditional rezoning 2024-225, Norman Walton Perkins and Orson Incorporated.
Moving on to conditional rezoning 2024-225, Norm Walton Perkins and Orson Incorporated.
Chairman, board, as indicated, this is a request by Norm Walton with Perkins and Orson for a conditional rezoning of approximately 1.008 acres from the B2 general commercial district to the mixed-use traditional neighborhood district. The purpose of this rezoning is to allow for multifamily dwellings and open space. The property is located at 4673 South Amherst Highway and is further identified as tax map number 156-1-4. As indicated, the existing zoning is B2 general commercial. Existing land use is currently, it's vacant, however, many of you will familiarize yourself as this being the former Executive Inn lot. Future land use indicates urban development area with public water and public sewer serving this property. The proposed use for the lot, if rezoned, is, as indicated, for apartment buildings and open space within the staff report and also the board packet. There's a conceptual plan for what that would look like. Regarding the traffic impact for this rezoning in the next three, as it stands right now, county staff has information indicating that a 200-foot taper into this development, this is the Madison Heights Town Center, will be required, as well as a storage for southbound into the development as well, being roughly 300 feet. It is... Staff reached out to VDOT regarding the traffic impact analysis and the signal justification analysis. As it stands right now, to be fully approved by VDOT for the main boulevard, which would be to the north of this property, or kind of encapsulate some of this property, but mostly to the north of it, a revised TIA will need to be resubmitted to VDOT. In addition to that, the signal justification committee will need to approve the proposed in and out for the main boulevard. Right now, a cut-through is proposed, right to the north of this property, in sort of an alignment with Quickie. A cut-through pretty much means that there are right ends and right outs, and left ends and left outs, but you can't cut straight across. And as right now, the developer is looking to go through that. Staff's recommendation to the commission was to table this request due to the lack of information provided by VDOT. However, as you will see within the summary, the commission decided to move forward with conditional rezoning 2024-225 with the submitted proffer 5.0. That once submitted proffer is fairly straightforward, and we'll go over the larger amount ones here in the next hearing. But the proposed proffer is that the development of this parcel will comply with the Madison Heights Town Center master plan dated 6/12/2024. That master plan can also be found within your board packet as well. I'd like to bring that up.
And as you can see, this is the main boulevard that I was speaking about regarding the signal justification. Quickie is over here, and that is where staff currently stands regarding the traffic impact of this conditional rezoning. There is a recommended motion found within your item summary for this rezoning, and at this time, are there any questions for staff?
Board, any questions for staff? All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please step up at this time. Just make sure you state your name, district.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Sam Patel. I am in Mr. Wade's District, District 5. I'm the developer of the Madison Heights Town Center project, and while we have a bigger discussion to have there... I just want to set a little bit of background, though, in terms of where we stand with VDOT. We're diligently working with them, but, you know, we don't have comments. We've submitted everything to them, we don't have comments back. We know the boulevard goes roughly right there, but in terms of the length of the taper, I'd love to know what that is. We're happy to oblige whatever they want, but we just don't quite know exactly what that is yet. So the challenge for us becomes if we wait on their comments before we proceed, it could be six months at the rate we've been going. You know, we certainly want to make progress, we want to build this main entrance, we're dying to build the main boulevard, but we just can't do it until we have comments back from them, which have been challenging to obtain, so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? All right, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak opposed? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Board?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Patel or Mr. Orson, can I ask you a question, please? So how long has VDOT had your traffic?
April the 8th.
April the 8th, okay. So is this preventing... I know it's preventing you from constructing the boulevard, but is it preventing you from constructing other things within your development?
It is. So Trojan Road, Grace Church can't build church... They can't build their church until Trojan Road's approved, and we actually just got comments back last week, 90 of them, in fact, last week.
90 comments?
90 comments, some of which were... Well, I... We got a lot of comments back. I'd be happy to share with those with y'all later.
Hey, I know you're using Perkins and Orson, no, that's a joke. He didn't even crack a smile, but anyway. No, seriously, I mean, Mr. Bryant, is there some way you can contact the VDOT office and stress to them the importance of this development to Amherst County? See if we might be able to get the reviews done a little bit more expeditiously, please?
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say, I'll go ahead and make a motion, it's in my district, so. I move that the board approve conditional rezoning 2024-225 with the submitted proffers. Motion on the floor, any further discussion? All right, hear none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Any opposed? None, motion passes. Next item, well, before we begin the next item, so I just want to make a note, we skipped over special exception 2024-288, and that was based on the denial of the rezoning prior, so we will not be covering that special exception tonight. Next item we have to cover is conditional zoning amendment 2024-226. Mr. Creasy?
Thank you, Chairman. This is also a request by Norm Walton with Perkins and Orson for the amendment to the proffers and master plan development associated with conditional rezonings 2022-204 and 2022-283. The property is identified as tax map numbers 156-1-4, 156A3, A2, A5, 15619, 1561A, and 15612,34A5 and Lot C. The previously approved master plan included 10 additional acres. Since that approval, those 10 acres have been deeded to Grace Church for their development and are therefore not included within the proffers or master plan update. However, as you can see, they are still part of the proposed layout that you see before you. The proposed updated master plan separates the development into three different subareas, the neighborhood center, residential area, and open space. The neighborhood center, which will now take up roughly 20.15 acres. If you can see here, the neighborhood center is now proposed on two sides of the proposed park. So you have the 13-acre park, and then you have the neighborhood subarea on either side. The residential neighborhood will consist of 131.22 acres, which is roughly 77% of the total net developable area. And then open space will be approximately 18.53 acres, which is roughly 10.9%. The proposed land use is within the subareas is for commercial, around 70,500 square feet. These main buildings along here, along the main boulevard through here, will all have commercial down on the first floor, and in some of those buildings, it will be mixed use with residential areas up top. Apartments and condos will effectively account for 875 units, give or take, townhouses, 263 units, and then 287 single-family dwelling lots. Again, based on the revised models and associated microsimulations, it is recommended that the southbound left turn lane. So if that is, if you were coming south on South Amherst Highway to turn into the development, that will... Recommended to have 350 feet of full width storage, and the northbound turn lane into the site being constructed is 200 feet of storage with a 200-foot taper. As indicated in the previous public hearing, staff is still waiting for a revised TIA from the developer to be submitted for a few revisions made to the master plan, as well, staff is looking for signal justification approval from VDOT so that the main boulevard's location can ultimately be determined. As of now, staff does not currently have that information, however, the developer has recently received comments, as indicated in the last one, for Trojan Road and the main boulevard. The previously approved proffers from rezoning 2022-283 and 204 can be found within your staff report, and the new proposed proffers are part of the item summary and also part of the staff report. I'd like to go over those. There are roughly 13 of them. Number one is straightforward, that all site plans will be built generally in accordance with the master plan dated 6/12/2024. Utilities shall be underground, all roads will be built to VDOT standards. Item number four is a replacement of the same proffer from the previously approved ones, indicating that the apartment buildings in Area 1 of the master plan will be white brick with the first three stories and an EIFS finish, or that black finishing on the top level. That's what those buildings will be built out of. Number five, the fifth proffer indicates all site plans are to be submitted and all improvements are to be built in conformance to all regulations found in Amherst County zoning and subdivision ordinance and be built general in accordance with the master plan. All roadway improvements necessary to safety and efficiency to accommodate traffic from the project will be completed per the traffic study as submitted by the developer with VDOT. All open space and parks, with the exception of the park outlined in proffer nine, as shown on the master plan, will be incorporated and maintained into a property owner's association. Number nine is in regarding to the 13-acre park. The owner will donate approximately a 13-acre park shown on the master plan that lies between the townhomes on the south end and apartment/patio homes on the north end to the county. Prior to the donation to the county, the park will be cleared and graded to accommodate the buildings and uses that are currently proposed on the master plan. Prior to donation, the trails shown on the plan will... Within the park parcel shall be constructed in general conformance with the plan. The trails will be the typical section found on the proposed roadway sidewalk plan, that's what you have before you. Also, prior to the donation, the access roads and parking areas for the park parcel, as shown on the master plan, shall be constructed in general conformance. After the park has been graded, improved, with trails and roads, the property shall be stabilized to meet Virginia erosion and sediment control and stormwater regulations, it shall then be deeded with a survey and properly recorded to the county. The county will take over ownership and maintenance of the park and construct improvements to develop it as a public use park. The park shall be completed and properly deeded to the county within one year of the main boulevard meeting VDOT standards. This is the same wording as from the previously approved rezonings for him. Number 10, buildings shown on the master plan that have frontage on main boulevard and border the neighborhood center as shown on the site use coverage map shall be oriented towards the boulevard where topography and VDOT standards allow. Number 11 is that boulevards that are constructed between the neighborhood center and the residential neighborhood shall be tree-lined on both sides with street trees having at least 1.5-inch caliper width measured at 5 feet off the ground, and with the spacing that meets landscaping requirements found in the zoning ordinance, and have sidewalks built on the residential neighborhood side of the street. Number 12 is water quality will be addressed through a combination of best management practices and is subject to approval by the zoning administrator or DEQ. And the last proffer is design standards, going over the building materials. These have not changed from the last approved proffer, and they are moving forward with this amendment as well. The commission did recommend approval of this conditional rezoning, a 5-0 vote. At this time, are there any questions for staff?
Board, any questions? All right, hear none. Thank you, Mr. Creasy. Go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please feel free to come up now.
I know you've all had an opportunity to look at the master plan, and I really mostly wanted to give you guys, and I wanted to see if you had any questions for me, anything you saw here.
Board, any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone wishing to oppose, speak opposed to this? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion for this one. I move that the board approve conditional zoning amendment 2024-226, sorry, with the submitted proffers. Motion on the floor, any further discussion? All right, hear none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Any opposed? None, motion passes. Next item we have is special exception 2024-292. Mr. Creasy?
This is also a request by Norm Walton with Perkins and Orson for a special exception in the mixed-use traditional neighborhood district. The purpose of the special exception is to allow for four multifamily dwelling unit apartments, open space, and a clubhouse with a pool. The property is identified as 4673 South Amherst Highway portion of, and is further identified as tax map numbers 15614, portion of, 15615, 156A, 156-1-4A, portion of, 1561A, portion of, and 156A5, portion of. Per Section 71108 of the Amherst County zoning ordinance, multifamily dwellings are your special exception in the residential neighborhood district. That is why this is coming before you today with this master plan amendment. This is now all considered residential subarea, and so that is why it's considered a special exception. The petitioner proposes to develop four apartment buildings on the 11.7-acre tract. Each apartment building will consist of 54 units for a total of 216 units, and the clubhouse and pool will be open to these four units and the two that are currently being constructed. Staff is not planning to go over the traffic impact on this, as is the same information we've provided you on the previous two hearings. There are two recommended conditions for this special exception, they're fairly straightforward. The first is that the master plan, that the apartment buildings and complex are built generally in accordance with the master plan dated 6/12/2024, and comply with all approved proffers from conditional rezoning amendment 2024-304. And number two, regulations, all local, state, and federal regulations shall apply during the construction. the construction in all phases of the project. At this time, are there any questions? Well, there is, my apologies, the commission recommended approval of this special exception, five oh, and there's a recommended motion in the item summary. Are there any questions for staff?
Board, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. So this is just for informational purposes for me. So the, this, this request here is for the four additional buildings, correct, on the adjacent piece of property that was just acquired, correct? All right, so, and I'm assuming this may have, this must have come before you guys at the service authority, but there has been discussions there with, with adding this many more residential units on this grid, I wanna make sure that we're not, we're still not facing any concerns with, with water flow.
Right.
As far as capacity and, and fire flow.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, and my talk to the service authority director, Mr. Tim Castillo, they are going through a master plan right now themselves, I believe, laying out all their water and sewage lines. In addition to that, they'll also know the capacity of their existing lines. That is set to be approved or finalized this fall, and after that finalization, that would be coming around to, hopefully, right around the time these site plans are starting to closely to be approved, and therefore, I don't wanna speak for Mr. Castillo and the service authority, but my assumption is that they'll be using that master plan that they're hiring a contractor to do, to use that in the review and development of these four apartment buildings to ensure there's enough capacity.
Mr. Chair, if I may, so in approving this, we've kind of put the zoning in place. We're changing the TND or the conditional use permit to allow the four additional buildings. So that's saying, okay, they will be permitted. Once this goes through your, what do you call it?
Developmental review committee?
Developmental review committee. If the capacity's not there, then Mr. Castillo's not gonna sign off on the plan.
Correct. They'll have to be.
Before there be no building permitted.
Because, and I'm not sure who I need to direct this to, but it, I was under the impression, because I was the start before I came back, is to be able to support what was in the original master plan with the initial piece of property, they were connected in to the water system off of Todd Lane. Is that correct? To basically create like a loop system to be able to support that, is that correct, Mr. Patel?
We've actually had a couple of water models that, that the service authority has reviewed, but in all scenarios, we do contemplate having to create a water loop in order to provide adequate water, volume and pressure.
Okay. That, that's, that's my main area of concern dealing with, with the high-volume residential structures such as that. So once they do their analysis, I'm just making sure I'm covering myself once I vote one way or the other, is that Mr. Castillo and the service authority has the ultimate say-so whether this moves forward or not. Based on those conditions.
Right, so they'll ultimately sign off the site plans if there's not enough water capacity there. They wouldn't sign off until a plan is given. In addition, if I may, they also, so during the building construction phase, the building official looks at water capacity, and we also send this off to the county's fire marshal so that they can sign off on sprinkler systems and all that, so they'll need to meet that capacity as well.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, board? All right, thank you, Mr. Creasy. All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, feel free to come up at this time. Mr. Patel.
Logan, yeah, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer anything that.
Any questions for Mr.? No, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak opposed? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Board, I'll go ahead and make a motion here that we approve special exception twenty twenty-four dash two-nine-two with the planning commission's recommended conditions. Motion on the floor, any further discussion there, board? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Any opposed? None, motion passes. Thank you. Next item we have is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I was gonna request if we could pull item C off to have a little bit of discussion on it, please.
Yeah, I was gonna request a same.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Motion withdrawn, so.
I'm gonna amend my motion to say the consent, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C at this time.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker, as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Any opposed? None. All right, we'll go ahead and discuss item C, carry forward fiscal year twenty-four funds for Manelison Rescue Squad. Mr. Martin?
So my, my question is, when we adopted the, this fiscal year budget, was there not funding in it for Manelison Rescue Squad?
Ms. McBride, I don't know the answer to that question.
No, there was not. There was none for them and one other Gladstone, I have to go back and look, but I know there was none in there, and I, he, it was requested that we carry forward this fiscal year twenty-four because they've worked out an agreement with a performance type agreement and.
Are we gonna see that agreement?
Well, I got an email from Mr. Beam. We met on this in early June. He had, he met with Manelison's new board of directors. He indicated that they had worked on a performance plan, and they had asked to carry it forward based on this new agreements of performance. We can certainly bring it to you if you'd like to see it.
I, I have no idea what they're talking about.
So, if I may, so let me provide a bit of clarification on this. So the, the forty-one A-sixty-nine was there. It was just not dispersed to them.
Correct, they had it in fiscal year twenty-four.
Correct, so the monies were there, however, due to, and I'm just, I'm gonna call it, just call it the way it is, due to a lack of performance, the monies were withheld, okay, from Manelison Rescue Squad. That has been discussed with them, and Mr. Chief Beam has been keeping Mr. Bryant apprised of all of that. So this is an ongoing work in progress, due to their shortage in manpower or the volunteers, their lack of, I shouldn't say participation as far as, but the, the answering of calls. I don't, I don't wanna misquote numbers, but there's a very small percentage of calls on the south end of the county that are being answered by Manelison Rescue Squad. Mr. Beam, Chief Beam is working, as Mr. Bryant just said, with the current, they have a new board of directors, okay, and they have been in place now for roughly a month. And they are working aggressively to come up with a plan in conjunction with the county as well as a volunteer program, to see if they can create some revitalization, for lack of better words, okay? So the discussions that have been had was the monies that have been requested to be carried forward, because they're, they've been dispersed, the way the emergency services council works is they decide within the council how those monies are dispersed, okay, to each department.
These are set during the budget process, not.
Well, these are the operating budgets, this is the capital money. But, but nonetheless, it's, it's a work in progress for this moving forward, which I was gonna address when we got to the emergency services council report, because it's a lot of moving pieces and parts right now. And I think at some point in time, probably in the near future, we, we as a board are gonna need to talk about this. As far as how, if we want to continue and how we want to disperse those funds going forward. So. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, if, if I'm, I guess my issue with this is, is that staff, you guys, Chief Beam, Director of Finance, or Deputy County Administrator, whatever, and County Administrator, made a conscious effort not to include funding from Manelison Volunteer Rescue Squad in the new budget, right? So that was a conscious decision.
Yes, it was.
So now, you're coming forward and saying, oh, well, we probably shouldn't have done that, let's carry this money forward. Because there was also a reason you didn't disperse the funds to begin with, right? And I think Mr. Adams said it was because of lack of performance, okay? So I've said many times before, I don't wanna see the volunteers fold, obviously, but I do wanna see them perform for the, the funding that we give them. So, but before we go into any kind of pay for call or pay for performance, I'd like to know as a board member what those agreements are. So before any funding is dispersed, I think this board should be briefed on it and be able to have a say on it. It's just my thought, and obviously, the rest of the board should weigh in on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
And I hear everything that you all said, and thank you for the clarification, because I wasn't aware of it. Having said that, it's always been historically on the consent agenda, it's non-controversial issues. This is obviously not, and that doesn't fall in that bucket, because it was stuff I didn't know, so it shouldn't have been on the consent agenda, in my opinion.
I agree with that.
Mr. Bond?
And I just wanted to clarify, we, next week have the meeting with the board of directors and the leadership of the rescue squad to talk about what the incentive program might look like. So this was just kind of, the rollover was part of that. So we haven't formalized anything with them yet. Let's say, I think Tuesday of next week.
So was there a timing issue, Ms. McBride, on doing the carry forward, or?
I was following Chief Beam's request. He knew it was gonna roll into the general fund, you know, at the end of twenty-four, and asked for it to be moved ahead, which.
I mean, if you need to move it ahead, that's fine, but before.
I don't have to. I mean, you can do it whenever you want to in the current year. A carry forward can happen anytime. He just can't spend the money yet.
But basically, it's unspent funds.
Correct, it's unspent in twenty-four. If you wanna carry forward and appropriate it into twenty-five.
But isn't that the money that we used to pay for all these supplemental projects? Is the leftover money, right?
Yes, sir.
So has it been spent already on some supplemental project?
Technically, if you wanna do first in, first out, yes, but if you, or last in, first out, you still have plenty of money in your general fund, but.
But that's, okay.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, I.
But it's kind of like we're spending it twice. But before we do anything, I'd like to know what.
If you'd like us to just pull this off and table it until we, they have finalized the.
That's just my thought, there was.
I, I hear your request.
You guys made a conscious effort not to have the funding there, and if you changed your mind, I'm all about it, but I'd like to know what we're doing before we do it.
And if I, if I can speak to that, because I've spent a lot of time with Chief Beam talking about this, I think a couple of things happened. One, new, new leadership made a difference. And two, it was a conscious effort because of the lack of calls that they were running. So that was the conscious decision, I think, after Chief Beam and Mr. Bond, correct me if I'm wrong, his meeting with their leadership, they believed that they were working towards putting some steps in place to do better performance methods. But yes, we can certainly pull this off until that's set in place.
We had some really positive discussion with them, which kind of put next week's meeting into place.
So, so let me, let me ask you this, and I don't wanna keep belaboring, but where are the county's career staff housed?
At this point, Manelison Fire Department.
Manelison Fire.
The former life-saving crew and.
Right, okay, so they're not even in the rescue squad building? Okay, and why is that?
At this point, the, somewhat of the relationship with the previous administration over there. But they, they have made a conscious effort to reach out and try to repair some of that, just in the new board changeover for their department.
So we don't have staff in their building, and they're not running calls? Is that factual?
It, it's a very low percentage, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, the, the only thing I would add, and this may help Mr. Martin with it, he's right, there was a conscious decision not to fund them in the upcoming fiscal year, or actually in this fiscal year, now that we're in, after July first. So the thought process, Mr. Martin, was, speaking to Chief Beam, for the funds that were not used last fiscal year with the new board and what their rejuvenation desires, for lack of better words, was to at least, if we have these funds available, and if they do increase their participation, it would somewhat show our commitment on behalf of the county to be able to support the volunteers. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I'm a hundred percent behind that, yet I'd like to know what it is, because I don't want to see us give them forty-nine thousand dollars for running five calls.
And, but to be honest.
That's not reasonable.
I, I think that's kind of the plan. This would be the cap of whatever the incentive would be.
So before we disperse any funds, I would like for this board to be able to review what that agreement is. And, Mr. Bryant, it seems like to me that agreement was gonna be kind of done without this board's input. So this should not have been on the consent agenda. Just my opinion, so. It was, we pulled it off, everything's good, but I would not, I would not like to see the funds dispersed.
Yes, sir.
Table that, get a little smarter, bring some information back to us later time. All right, thank you. Next item we have is old business, county administrator change, COLA wage structure adjustment, Ms. Felix.
Good evening, members of the board and county staff. At the June twenty-fifth meeting, you asked me to bring you back some more information about the adjustments we make to the wage structure based on the COLA. And so I've done some research, and I wanted to report on that to you tonight. I thought it might be helpful to do a little brief history of our current county compensation plan. I was hired in twenty sixteen. It is my understanding that upon the recommendation of a compensation consultant, the county moved from a step system to broad pay bands in twenty fifteen, right before I was hired. These broad ranges give department heads more flexibility in hiring, and they do not automatically reward longevity. Sorry, I'm not very good at adjusting this. There we go, sorry. They typically rewarding merit instead of longevity is considered a compensation best practice, and funding was provided by the board in FY twenty-twenty-two to procure an electronic performance management system with the stated goal at that time to implement merit pay. We have been moving the pay ranges by the full COLA for as long as I've been here through a county administrator change. The way those work is they're reported to the board, and if you all have no objections, then they go into effect. And these are the dates that they were reported to the board. Some issues to consider when making compensation adjustments are compression, internal equity, salary competitiveness, and impact on employee benefits. You also wanna look at the current HR trends. One is equal pay for equal work, and that's not just protected classes like sex and race, but also there is an effort to, to pay people the same if they're doing the same work. That tends to not take into account things like longevity or experience even sometimes. We also have a very horizontal organizational structure. Make sure I changed it. The county's very flat. The county's very flat, but that is a trend in HR, is to have more horizontal structures. And pay-for-performance or merit pay is also a trend at this time. And it's even gone so far as paying employees to, when they reach specific milestones. There are two types of pay compression. One is when employees who have been in a job for a long time make less than new hires in the same position. And as Mr. Adams stated in the June 25th meeting, employees don't like that. And then the other is when a manager's pay is disproportionate to the pay of the employees they supervise. And while both types of compression do occur sometimes, they're not necessarily due to unfair practices. For instance, you might hire in somebody at a later date that has better skills, and so in making that job offer to the new hire, you may bring them in at the same rate or even more than someone who's been there a while because of their skill level. As you all requested, I looked at, looked at the county compression. I reviewed the FY 2025 salaries, hire dates, and VRS years of service for all full-time regular county and constitutional offices, office employees. And why we, the reason why we look at VRS years of service is because we hire many people in that may only have been with us for a short time, but they may have been with another entity. In fact, we love getting employees from other entities that have been trained and are great employees and bring good skills and experience to us. And so, we always look at VRS years of service as well as, as the county service. Most county departments are small with a single employee in a position, and often the department head serves as the direct supervisor. In those types of departments, there is much less likely to be compression. I'll use my own department as an example. There's just two of us, a, a director at a department head level with 30 years of experience, and an HR generalist at a lower grade, which is five years of experience. So there's very little chance that there would ever be compression in my department, for example. However, in the larger departments, while, while we do occasionally see some compression, the administrative staff, who, I'm talking about the county administrator, the deputy county administrator, and myself, have been working with department heads to add layers of middle management to assist in reducing the span of control for direct supervisor, The larger departments who follow the county's HR policies, that's the Sheriff's Office, Public Safety and Public Works, have often had to hire into the range for some time in order to recruit for hard-to-fill positions. Those are things like our heavy equipment operators, our starting deputies in the Sheriff's Department, for example. So, in those larger departments, we're not hiring in at the minimum salary. In most cases, compression is evaluated when we make a salary offer, and new employees are usually brought in a salary less than what more tenured employees are earning. The exception to this, when I did my evaluation, is looking at the EMS staff. Rapidly rising EMS pay nationwide has led to some compression with those current EMS staff. And I'm going to make a recommendation on how we can address this going forward a little bit later in my presentation. And the board has provided funding for us to hire into the range and for these competitive types of positions as well. Administrative staff and department heads regularly evaluate salaries to address individual inequities. Jeremy has given a pot of money each year that we use both to do counteroffers if somebody's leaving, or if we've got a new hire coming in. But we also use it to regrade positions and to give people increases when they take on additional duties. And so we're constantly looking at compensation and trying to be as fair as we can with our employees. We look at things like the, the grade that they're in, educational requirement skills. We get market data. I'm able to survey the other HR directors in the area and years of service. Some recent examples of us doing this is that as part of the Sheriff's Office transition, we adjusted salaries for several employees based on years of service, and that was to be fair with, to them with the new employees that were being hired in. Public safety positions were regraded last spring, and to use promotion to a new pay grade to reward advanced certifications. And the fact, in the past, you all had given certification pay. The employees were interested in instead having that reflected in their salary, which impacts their VRS benefit. And so we made that change in the spring, I guess almost a year ago. And we also, at that time, placed the EMS captains in an equivalent grade to the captains in the Sheriff's Office in an effort to be fair. This past spring, library positions were also regraded. The library received some unexpected funding from the state, and they were able to use the existing budgeted funds along with this unexpected funding to regrade their positions, which had gotten quite a bit out of, they had gotten behind, and we were able to catch them back up. When we look at internal equity, we do this to ensure that employees performing similar work or with similar skill sets receive equitable pay. We address this by regular evaluation of the pay grades and ensuring that employees are kept whole whenever possible. We also look at salary competitiveness. We compare salaries from similarly situated employees in order to enable an, in order to enable us as an organization to competitively hire the most suitable candidates. This has been addressed through salary surveys and market-based adjustments approximately every four to five years. I did a salary survey in 2018 that the board was graciously gave us funding to implement, and also in 2022 that they also gave us funding to implement. And the final thing that we look at is the impact on employee benefits. The VRS system is based on the age of the employee at retirement, years of service, average compensation, and a plan multiplier. That's what their retirement benefit is based on. The Virginia retirement system does not allow an employer to contribute toward an eligible employee's retirement benefit using a salary which is more than the maximum of the employee's pay grade. And I have to document to VRS whenever someone retires all increases they have gotten in that period that their retirement is based on. And so, they're, they are looking at that. It's, it's not just a, a policy they don't enforce, they do look at it. Ideally, you want an employee to reach the midpoint of their pay range at about the 20-year mark, and this leaves room for larger increases as the employee reaches that peak earning period when they're making the most money, and their raises are based on a percentage. They get larger and larger raises. So you want, you know, quite a bit of room. You want that last half of the range to let them move up so they don't bump up against the max, and you're not able to pay as much into their retirement. In talking about COLA adjustments, the purpose of a cost of living or COLA is to help keep employees whole in the face of rising costs. It's not intended to move employees within the range, and it's typically not viewed by employees as a pay raise. And I know that, I don't want that to sound like they're not ungrateful for the money, because they really are, but it comes down to what they can bring home to feed their family. And if groceries have gone up 30%, and, and the COLA's, you know, 3%, it may or may not meet those rising costs. So they don't typically see it as being rewarded for their work in the same sense as, say, merit pay. And one of the big consumer costs that thankfully we've had a handle on the last two years is health insurance. Often, employees' COLA gets eaten up by health insurance.
Excuse me.
Sure.
Yes. And thank you, HR Director, for, I mean, this is so comprehensive. You've put so much work into this, and I know it came from some, a request for information from you, Mr. Adams. Is this, is this what you were looking for?
Well, I think once she gets into some of the suggestions, but I think it's still going to present some questions.
Recommendations, okay. I mean, because this is a huge tutorial. I was make sure that we were going down the road he was, he was looking for. Okay?
Sure. I have three more slides. I surveyed the southwest region of the Public Sector Human Resources Association that I belong to. I'm able to send that query out to all those directors in that area and get responses back. 19 entities responded. 14 out of the 19 do provide an annual COLA, and those COLAs varied this in 2025 from 0% because some entities didn't give a COLA at all this year, even though they normally do, and up to 5%. Six out of the 19 entities adjusted their pay range by the full COLA amount annually. And then eight out of the 19 adjust their pay range by the COLA, but by a differing amount, particularly, they might do the full COLA on the max and a lesser amount on the min. And two entities adjusted their pay ranges by the merit pay amount, and another entity does a 2% what they call a pay scale maintenance adjustment. That's something new they just started this year, and that's their plan to go for it, is every year to do a 2%, basically moving their ranges as we're considering. One entity that does not regularly address their pay ranges stated that they had to adjust their pay ranges by 65% this year. So that's the danger of not adjusting them, is that you can get behind very rapidly. In summary, the purpose of the COLA's are to, COLA's are to keep employees whole and are not intended to advance them in their pay ranges. If the pay range maximum, maximums are not adjusted regularly, employees will advance too rapidly in their pay range and are more likely to top out for VRS. Adjusting the minimum of the pay ranges helps keep starting salaries competitive, and concerns about compression and internal equity can be addressed through individual employee pay adjustments and/or adjusting the minimums of the pay ranges less than the full COLA amount. And an example of this is with public safety. We had to make conditional offers on the new employees that we're hiring to fill those new positions that the board approved. We, when we, when we determined at the June meeting not to move the pay ranges yet, to delay that decision, we, we needed, we didn't want to withdraw those conditional offers. So we have hired in these new people at the same amount as people that were here last fiscal year. Brad has some funding that he can use, and we're going to adjust those people that were here last year to do a little more staggering on that so that we don't create the situation that Mr. Adams was concerned about at the last meeting. And finally, my recommendation, and thank you for being patient. I really thought I would, would offer you two options to consider tonight. One would be to continue to move the min's and the max for the amount of the COLA annually as we have been doing. We would continue to make salary adjustments where needed to avoid compression and provide internal equity. We also would be more cognizant of the situation that Mr. Adams mentioned and try not to bring people in at the same amount that someone who is currently here is making. The second recommendation would be to increase the maximums by the same amount as the COLA annually and increase the minimum by half the amount of the COLA annually. This would be really clean, that, you know, this is what we would do. We would still bring it to you all for approval each year, but we would sort of have a formula that we could use. We would continue to make the individual salary adjustments to address any past compression or internal equity issues not already addressed. This option does risk that starting pay will be, will more quickly fall behind the market, and it may not solve compression for the new hires when we have to hire into the grade where we have to make a competitive offer to get some, a desirable new employee to accept the offer we're making. But we are going to try to be more cognizant of that. Thank you so much for your attention. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Board questions? Mr. Adams, I don't know if you have anything right on hand.
So, here's my question.
Okay.
The first thing. So we approved $269,000 for this fiscal year for 5% increases, correct?
3%.
I mean, 3, excuse me, 3%. Sorry about that.
Yes, sir.
So 3%. So for your, for the adjustments, and if we continue going on the path that we're going now, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, those adjustments do not, they're not factored into that $269,000, correct? Do you know what I'm talking, I mean, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, starting pay is factored in, because if people have openings, Stacy has to budget for those openings. So, so the new starting pay is factored in. The, the max is, the purpose of moving the max is just so that people stay whole.
Okay. So, all right, so let's switch gears. So if we're going to adjust the max, which I'm assuming the max we're talking about would be another 3%, correct?
Yes, we would, we would move the, that amount out, the 3%.
So we're budgeting for that other 3%? All right, so where does that money come from?
You, you don't need to budget for it, because we're moving the people within the range too, so it's, they're, they're getting paid the same amount that's being budgeted. So this, the max does, the only purpose of the max is for, for VRS. VRS won't let us top out, so we have to have a realistic max that won't, you know, that people won't top out of.
Okay. So we're just moving a line?
Yes.
Theoretically.
Yeah, we're, we're moving the range, and we're moving the people, so everything stays equitable.
My thought is, Mr. Chair...
Yes, sir.
One, we're artificially inflating all pay ranges, is what we're doing. And I think if there is a certain class of employees, like the EMS workers, that we can't hire in, teachers, whatever it is, then those employees should be reclassed. Bam. But to go straight across the board and just arbitrarily start increasing pay ranges by whatever the percentage cost of living is, to me, does not make sense. And I'll tell you why. I'm, I'm not the brightest apple on the bush, on the tree. Apples don't grow on bushes on the tree.
You made your point.
I made my point, right? Okay. So if Mr. Adams and, if Mr. Adams gets hired at $40,000 a year, okay? And he works for a year, and he gets a 2% cost of living increase, right? For two years in the row, then his salary would go up by about, what, $1,600?
$1,000.
So you've been here for two years, and now you're making $41,600.
Yes, sir.
Because you automatically increased the bottom range, the starting range, by the same amount. Now I come in, same job, but the starting salary is $41,600. Mr. Adams has been here for two years, I've been here no years, and we're making the same amount of money.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't make sense.
Yes, I do understand that concern.
Makes no sense to me.
The only department where it is, is an issue right now is with the EMS staff, because, and there is a tendency with what they're, what is called paramilitary organizations to pay people that are doing the same job the same. Mr. Beam and I have talked about it. He's got some funding for us to fix it. So once we fix it, then this year will, this year will be good. And that's why I made the second recommendation, that maybe we only do the max by half of what, do the min by half of what the max is, and that would solve your concern.
This, this is the issue with Chief Bean having the money to fix it, or ex-department head ex having the money to fix it... or ex department head, ex, having the money to fix it. It's not recurring money, it's just some money that they found somewhere. And then the next fiscal year, when we're sitting in the budget, guess who's got to find it, right? Because department heads have gone out here and increased salaries, right? And once you do it, then the board's on the hook for it, and they had no input into it.
Yes, sir, I understand your concern.
So I don't think that's a good practice, at all. Do y'all disagree?
No, we're, we're writing checks that we can't, we can't cash, right? We, we're, we're not, we're not planning appropriately for the future. Because anything we do with payroll and salaries is in perpetuity. Because once it's out, it's no putting that horse back in the barn, right?
If you've got a group, whether it be the Sheriff's Department, EMS, the land, I don't care which group it is. But if there's an issue with the pay, okay, just like Chief Bean did, he came in here and said, look, we need to get the starting pay up. You know, we want to do, pay for progression, yada, yada, yada. And we all nodded our heads and say, yes, right? You need to focus on that, that group of employees, okay? Because there's a reason that you can't hire people in. And it's because the market is demanding higher salaries, right?
Yes, sir.
We need to fix that as a board, okay? We don't need to do it piecemeal and random, random.
Our current.
Let, the employees know that I have sat here and I have, and all of us have fought for you at least the four years I've been on the board, four and a half years. And I will continue to do that, okay? But I can't do it arbitrarily, and I do not think that this is a very good process for doing it. So, I, I don't support it. I think you need to come back with something else.
Our, our current policy allows the county administrator to approve regrades.
That's great.
If, if, if you want something different, we would have to change policy. So I would just need direction on, on what you would want me to do with that.
Well, if he can approve it, why are we talking about it?
No, he can approve them. That's what I said, he can approve them. Our policy allows him to approve them. And you expressed some concern about.
Why are we talking about it if he can approve it?
I'm talking about regrades. You were talking about tweak, when we make these little tweaks, that it costs the board more money. And you all wanted to be involved. So I, I'm, what I'm saying is that would take a policy change. And I'm happy to do that if, if you all direct me to that, to do that.
So, and well, one of the concerns that, you know, and Ms. Felix and I talked about this. One of the concerns we have is if we don't consider some adjustment. And that's why we brought that second option. The second option was to regrade the minimums only half. And as I understand it, is that what the city of Lynchburg does, is the half percent on the min's and the full? I think that's what I understood you to say. So that was, seemed to be somewhat of a compromise. Instead of not touching the grades at all, because if we don't touch the grades, then we have to at some point. And so then the question is, when? You know, how often do we, do we come back every three years? Do we come back every five years?
The city of Lynchburg varies that they, they don't do it necessarily by the same amount as the COLA. For FY 2025, they're doing two percent on the min and three percent on the max. And their COLA was three percent. But let me find the one that does it by half.
Across the board, was that across the board?
Yes, yes, sir.
So I think that's the question that we were struggling with, was do we, do we then come back every so often? So we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to come back and have a salary study where we get so out of alignment like we did in the past, that we have to come back and we've, we've lost, we've lost our place again, right? So, the idea is there's, there's some, as we're, as we're floating the boats, we're bringing the boats up some in terms of the percentage of the COLA. The second option was to only increase the minimums by half, which takes somewhat care of that problem of compression, right? And so that's, that's the question, is how we move forward. If we don't do anything, if we, if we don't accept the CAC, the County Insurance Change, then we're gonna fall behind, right? And it's, the question is, how long do we wait before we, then do we wait and do a whole market study all at once?
Falling behind.
In terms of minimum and maximums, if we don't touch them. Because what, what, what the idea here was, was to, as we're, as we're floating the ships, we float together. We move things together up, right? At, at the COLA, right? Not, not as, in terms of a raise, but at the COLA level. If we do nothing, so if you take that same example of the $40,000, if the minimum starting is, let's say, $40,000, the maximum $60,000, if we never touch those, right? That position's gonna fall behind, unless we do a salaries.
Only falling behind if the market dictates that it's falling behind. What you're doing, what, what my issue is, and what I'm having trouble wrapping my mind around, is that we're artificially inflating the market based on cost of living, right? And you say, well, we need to do this to get. The two issues I have with what you said, Ms. Felix, is one, you're like, well, we might bring someone in with better skill sets than the people that we have that have been here five years. Well, that's an issue, because we haven't developed them the way that we should have, right? And, and two, you have the authority to bring somebody in more than the minimum. So if they're super duper, you can bring them in at whatever you want to, right? But then you, or whomever, the department head, whatever, has to look at the people that are already in that position, right? Versus what you're bringing this person in at. So, yeah, that's just my issue.
I think we can come up with another strategy. I think one of the things that I asked Ms. Felix to look into was to give you a comprehensive understanding. And, and we, we, what she learned was that we've done this seven years in a row, this way. Not saying because we did it this way was the right way, we just did. We did it seven years in a row. This will be the eighth year in a row to do it that same way. So, I'm sure there's certain strategies, other ways we can look into it.
I'm just expressing my questions and concerns. I do not drive this board. If the rest of the board wants to vote on one or the other, I'm happy for it, right? I'm just giving you my opinion.
Ms. Tucker, what do you think?
I tend to agree with Mr. Martin. I, I mean, I think that we have to do the COLA, because if not, I think we will fall behind. Everybody else will know. In my, in my business, you do the COLA. I gotta think about this some more, it's, it's just too much at one time.
All right, let's, if the board agrees, let's table it for now. Look into some other options as well, and then we'll add it back to the calendar at a later date.
And I'll send you the survey results from the other entities, so you can look at what they're doing.
That'd be good, thank you.
Thank you.
Chad, thank you. Next item we have is new business overlay zoning district, Virginia Blue Ridge Railway Trail. Mr. Creasy.
Chairman, Board. The Board at their 2023 retreat directed staff to look into a potential overlay district for the Virginia Blue Ridge Railway Trail. I consider it the Rose's Mill Trail, but definitely the Blue Ridge Railway Trail. The, within your item summary, there's some information to provide you all for what we, staff believes that we can and cannot require for a potential overlay district. The first is the overlay district can extend the entire length of the trail, as there is no minimum nor maximum for how far out it can extend. Staff would recommend a 400-foot overlay from county-owned property onto adjoining property owners, if this is something you all choose to move forward with. The 400 overlay also comes for a Route 130 overlay district. And staff also believes that is a feasible setback for trying to keep this trail scenic in its, in its nature. The overlay district can restrict structures from being built within the designated overlay district. For example, for the Route 130 overlay, there are setbacks of either 100 or 125 feet on property. They're zoned R1, R2, A1, and those typical setbacks are either 50 or 75 feet. And so we can expand on those setbacks and require more restrictive setbacks. If you do decide to move forward with a potential change, staff would recommend a 200-foot setback from county-owned property. The overlay district cannot restrict civil culture, horticultural, or agricultural activities such as logging within this area. This is due to the entire area be, being zoned A1, agriculture residential. Now, if the property was zoned residential through here, staff believes that, that we could prohibit such, such type of uses. But with it being zoned A1, staff in conjunction with the county attorney do not believe that we could restrict a property owner from an agricultural use such as logging on their own property. The overlay district can require cer- certain uses, such as manufactured homes, signs, to be a special exception permit in the, in these areas. So for example, in the Route 130 overlay district, it extends 400 feet on either side of the right-of-way and has setback requirements of 100, 125 feet. However, if, let's say you're still within the 400 feet, you meet the 125-foot setback, you would still have to, a property owner would still have to come before you all for a special exception for a manufactured home, even if they meet that 100-foot setback and they're still within that overlay district. So that is something else that we could require. We could potentially require that for all structures within the overlay district. I would leave, if that's something you want to move forward with, that would be something staff would look into. We don't have a, a recommendation for that at this time, however. If it is something, if this is an ordinance and overlay that you all choose would be best for the county, staff believes that restricting manufactured homes, signs of that nature, and potentially even accessory structures and dwellings, they should be restricted or set back a certain more distance within this overlay. The recommended motion for the Board is to either to direct staff to, to work on a potential overlay district or to take no action at this time. Please, at your pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Board, any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm, I'm not against an overlay district associated with this. However, I, obviously, I don't know right off the bat how many property owners we're dealing with on both sides of the Blue Ridge Railway Trail. And how this could potentially impact or infringe on the, the, the property rights of those, of those property owners. That, that's, that's my number one concern, right? I, I will tell you, my opinion is, is if, if, if we feel that this is something that we want to proceed with, I'm not sure if this is, it has to happen or if we would do it. But if it, if it can go either way, if we want to continue, I definitely think this needs to be, this needs to go before a public hearing to where we can have the input from, from the property owners, because that's what I'm gonna be, that, that's what I'm gonna be cautious with as far as how this may impact the, the property rights from, from anybody for that, that entire duration of that, of that trail.
Yes, sir. And staff's, the way staff would move about this is if you all decide to move forward with this, staff will work on this change to hopefully bring something back to you in August for you to, to look over with any suggestions. It would then go before the Planning Commission as a public hearing, and then back before you all that preceding month as another public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would also like to request that a presentation be given to the Ag Committee, because this goes through a lot of ag land. I want to see what it does with fencing. You kept mentioning forestry. I want to see what it does to cattle fencing, things of that nature.
And, and just for reference, as it stands now, the county does not regulate fencing unless you go over a certain height, then you must get a building permit for it. So you, you, that would not take.
How close can they, how does, would, would a farmer have to move a fence to comply with this overlay district?
No, ma'am. As it stands now, we don't regulate it as-is, so we wouldn't regulate it through this ordinance either.
What about a barn?
That would be something that we would potentially look into regulating with an overlay. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My request stands.
So, Mr. Chair, my thought on it is, is one, I don't think you should rush this ordinance to try and have it back to us by August. I think you should take your time and do it correctly. That being said, I disagree with you and the county attorney, although I'm not an attorney, although I play one on TV, is that it is an overlay district. And I think you could restrict logging in certain areas. And I think you should look at it from a riparian buffer from the stream and from the floodplains, okay? Because I think we're also in it, or at least I think we should, we should be interested in protecting the water quality of the, the stream. So I think there's multiple things to look at. I would not rush into anything. I would take your time and do your research. I would look at other localities and come back with some good recommendations before you move forward. Fully support you moving forward. I think you should, but I don't think you should rush doing it, just to get it done.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll second what Mr. Martin said. I think it's a good idea to look into this a little further. I'd agree definitely about presenting to the Ag Committee as well, so make sure that happens. Board, is there a motion at this time?
Do, do we need to make a motion on it?
I mean, if, if we're just directing you to work on it, we can do that. But I, I think we, I think you got that from the retreat that we did, right? So, yeah, I think you're going in the right direction. At least this is coming from me, but I wouldn't rush it. I'd be right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tyler.
All right. Next item we have is the county attorney's report. Mr. Popovich.
I don't have anything at this time. Everything that I have is in closed meeting for discussion.
Thanks, sir. Next items, Liaison Committee reports, Emergency Services Council. Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the only thing I would like to bring you guys up to speed is the Emergency Services Council is working aggressively to update the operating guidelines, the standard operating guidelines and standard operating procedures associated with the volunteer agencies. And that's going very well. We had to take a pause for the month of July. We had been meeting on a monthly basis, but due to Chief Bean being out of town, and I felt it was necessary for him to be present for us to, to continue with some forward progression. We will start meeting again back in August. This kind of, this kind of falls on the, the, the tail end of what we were discussing earlier as far as funding goes. I, I have, it's of my opinion, and I, I would hope that I can get the support from the Board, where we need to come up with some sort of formal plan going forward, much like we planned in a budgetary process for this county. In the spending of the funds for the Emergency Services Council, I'm not trying to create more work, but I think we have to, I think we need to create more of a CIP plan within the Emergency Services Council. The 100, I think it's $118,000, that, that pot of money that's set there for, that they can make the request to Chief Bean, i.e. if, I think, Amherst Fire Department has taken, and then Manellson, same thing, when they had the HVAC unit go out and we just approved to spend X amount of dollars in a breathing air system down at their station that was, that needed to be, it was long overdue. However, I think, no different in what we do for the county, I think that those same type of guidelines need to be put in place for those folks. Because it's still big-ticket items, it's still taxpaying dollars, and we need to have a plan. So, with that being said, I, that's how we want to move forward with that. And I'm definitely open for, for suggestions from, from the rest of you fellow board members. Obviously, we don't have to do anything with it immediately tonight. However, it is a new fiscal year, and I would like for us to develop some sort of forward-thinking plan for these funds and how we, how we go about distributing them, you know, in the future. Other than that, no other, no other activities from the Emergency Services Council. They've, the, the process is going. The process is going pretty well. Mr. Martin, did you have anything else you needed to add to that that I may have forgotten?
No.
Okay. That's it.
Next we have is Parks, Recs, and Culture Development Board. Mr. Martin.
Sure. Parks and Rec Board obviously continues to meet monthly. It's a very dedicated board. The Seminole Bark, the Dog Park, is nearing completion. I believe there were some, still some delays on the pavilion and finishing some trails and stuff, but that's moving forward. Is it still about two months behind? It's about two months behind. There's a building going in up at Mill Creek Lake to house a, basically like an ATV, side-by-side for the park attendant. I believe there's also, is there an AED up there yet? Defibrillator?
No.
Can y'all look into that? But anyway, okay, so anyway, for that, so, yeah, they're moving forward. I believe you had your senior lunching today. That went very well. And there is a football, like workshop, coming up on July 20th, maybe? Golf camp, so Parks and Rec, great things coming out of that department.
Thanks, sir. Next we have ag committee. Ms. Tucker.
The ag committee continues to work on our ag ordinance. Thank you, Tyler, for the work that you're doing on that with the committee. I think it's just about ready. There were a couple of changes that were made. I want to thank the county attorney also for your help with, on that with us. And so, it will be coming to the board September, is that right?
August.
August, okay. All right. And so, we'll, hopefully, we've got it in good order that you all will look upon it fondly. Also, the ag committee is working diligently on the fair, still looking for volunteers. It's coming along nicely. I think that there's going to be a continued, actually more of a focus this year on agriculture and family-friendly events versus midway, but we're still going to have a really robust midway, but, and even next year, trying to look at bringing in a rodeo and making it even more farm-friendly. And I'm just thrilled with the people that we've got serving. I thank them every meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item we have is citizen comment, so we'll reopen it now for any citizens that would like to come and speak. All right, seeing none, we'll close citizen comment. Next item we have is matters from members of the board. Mr. Adams.
Just a couple follow-up points of discussion. I understand that the new financial software is in play. Is that correct? How's that going?
It's going good. Well, we really haven't run everything through it yet, but it's going, right? It's going right now, yes.
Okay.
But it's locked.
And another item that I brought up as a point of concern was a couple months ago, was where do we sit with the 2023 FY audit?
It will come to you next meeting.
Okay. Can, so is it, I mean, is it finished?
There's a few final comments.
I just sent it to you today.
You just sent it to me today?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just sent the finals today.
So, if I, I don't know about the fellow board members, but I'd like a copy prior to the next meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Please send that to all of us. Nothing else, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Martin?
Yes. So, the other side of 29, where the truck storage lot was, I believe last year, we were going to revoke that conditional use permit. We gave him some additional time to get things squared away. I would request staff to go out and take that site plan and see if it's been constructed the way that it was portrayed to the board. Also, I would like for you to look into the number of vehicles that they're selling on that property per year. I believe in the state of Virginia, you can sell up to five before you have to have a dealer's license, which means you would be running a used car lot, which we did not approve on that site. So, if you could look into that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Ms. Martin?
No, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Tucker?
Not at this time.
I have none at this time either. Next item we have is closed session, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we enter into closed session for the limited purpose of consultation with legal counsel retained by the board regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice related to the disposition or acquisition of real property regarding the winning property pursuant to section 2.23711A3 and 8. Discussion or consideration of the disposition of publicly-held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the public body regarding property District 3 pursuant to section 2.23711A3. Consultation with legal counsel retained by the board regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice related to a board member in their official capacity assisting in seeking a legislative change related to the issuance of brady letters pursuant to section 2.23711A8, and consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation where such consultation in an open meeting would adversely affect the litigating posture of the county related to the Fisher special exception pursuant to section 2.23711A7 of the Code of Virginia. Motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote aye, we're in closed session.
Yeah. That's why I was trying to catch him. Looking up.
Hey, Dave.
How you doing?
Doing well, how are you?
Good to see you. Great to see you. She is coming around. It's amazing.
Yeah, I hope so.
It's been a...
She's coming around.
Good, good. We're going to take this case against the chair of the department.
Okay, I didn't know how it worked. All right. Thank you.
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 All right, I'll make a motion to come out of closed session. I move that the Board of Supervisors certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identifying the motion authorizing the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the only thing I would like to point out is I recuse myself from item number two, I think it was on there.
Yes.
Associated with real property in District Three.
Yes, sir.
So I'd just like to make an amendment to your motion, please, sir.
Motion on the floor as amended by Mr. Adams. All those in f- do we need to certify vote, or?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Tucker.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion on the floor, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you all.
Hey, uh.
Let's try not to do these late nights anymore.
See, this never happened until you came back.
I got a mission for you. I want you to find-
I don't think you sleep, do you?
A junkyard, solar farm, something to go up there on Indian Creek, okay?
You gotta have a pass so you can get on that road.
He knows the cleanest road in Amherst County.
Yeah, I got one.
Tom, we'll start that one down tonight.
He said I- I'm gonna scrub that road.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Have a good night.
You as well.